I'm going to start the welcoming statement so that we are able to begin the meeting on time. Welcome to this virtual Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or name of the speaker as shown on a computer screen. Public participation at board meetings, as per bylaw 0167.3, applies to this virtual meeting as well. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box found in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The Board President will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for guests calling in by telephone. This meeting has an opportunity for public comment under number nine on the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box at this time. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. The meeting will be recorded. The recording includes anything typed into the chat box.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hopper. It is 7:01, so we will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Pecky, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Seeger.
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Mr. Scheller?
Here.
Mrs. Pecky here. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
I am here as well, thank you. Dr. Hopper, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. And our first presentation, Q12 survey strategies from the administrative team, please.
Well, I can start with that one. We now have two committees. Mrs. Flynn is co-chairing with me for the support staff, and we have two volunteers for that. And we're going to set up a meeting shortly after the winter break. And then we have a teacher committee that's chaired by the principals working together. So I do believe they've met once, and I believe they're going to be meeting again then shortly after the holidays as well. So the goal here is to really look at building a strong school and district culture, so identifying how to build a healthy work environment for all employees. And the needs of the teachers and the support staff are distinctly different. So we're hopeful that having two separate groups will actually be more effective in ensuring that both groups have their needs met, and then start defining some action steps that we can share with you. I see that Mrs. Flynn is on. Stephanie, is there anything you'd add from the support staff perspective?
No, I just think it will be interesting to just be able to meet as a group and brainstorm and talk about some things.
And Dan and Danny are on. I saw them hop on earlier. I don't know if they'd add anything from their initial meeting for this year.
I'm not sure that I would add anything. I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with the paraprofessional group so that way we can have some unified strategies and be able to attack this after the break. So I'm looking forward to meeting.
Sorry, this is Danny. Sorry, I'm having some problems with my furnace right now, so I had to run back to my computer. No, I just attended the first meeting that I have been at this year, so I'm excited to really get my teeth into the group and move forward.
Did we also get a couple of additional elementary teachers join this year, too?
Yeah, my understanding was last year there was only, there were two members from the elementary school staff that were part of the team. So we got one more teacher, and then one of the paras from the elementary also expressed interest in being part of the support staff.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, anything else on that topic?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have solar customer hosted renewable solutions plan with Alliant Energy. And we have Mr. Henry Hunt here to speak to that, please.
And we've had an opportunity to work with Henry and Mr. Hanson, one of his other colleagues. It was interesting, I sent you an article today, Board members, because it was just interesting, it should come across my desk today. And one of the quotes in the article was that solar energy generation in the United States has grown at an annual rate of 49% since 2010. So it's really exciting for Little Manawha to be a part of this process potentially. So I will turn it over to Henry to answer any questions that you might have. You will be looking at this under New Business to consider approval of the plan with Alliant Energy. And Henry is your expert representing the district in that department.
Yeah, thank you so much, Melanie. As she said, we had met with Alliant. We started this process back in early, early spring, February, and for all the reasons they all know so well, it's taken longer for the utility to come up with their proposal to the district, but they've done that. And we've met with Alliant, Melanie and I, and Mark Hanson, who's the head of Sustainable Services at Hoffman. And we also then sat down briefly with the Buildings and Grounds Committee last week. And just a few overarching pieces here. One, what you're agreeing to today is the minimum. So our goal is to maximize the size of the system on your school because that means that will maximize the size of the payment to the district each year. And it was, it is, they were very clear that this is, that they put in the minimum in this agreement at this point so that they could see if that was appropriate for Manawha. And then, once the ball started rolling, they would do their due diligence with our assistance to make sure that the size is maximized, that is allowed for the local distribution grid. So really, today, that's what you're looking at. There are a few other items that we found that we wanted Alliant to add in to the lease agreement that included making sure there was access to the solar data for the students and teachers to use as classroom material. They were very open to that idea, and I expect that to be a part of the final project as well. So that is the one caveat, that this is the minimum. And I know that Melanie has been working with your council on the lease agreement as well to make sure that there are no loose ends there either.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I have a question. If you want to get in.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said they were going to be starting out at a minimum. Are we, and then it sounded like we're going to a maximum? Is that correct? I'm assuming the amount of solar energy produced.
Yeah, so actually, their payment is based on the footprint of the system. So you, the amount the system produces, or does not impact how much you are paid each year, which is one benefit of entering an agreement like this with Alliant. If there's a bad weather year where there's, you know, you have snow from early November through until, you know, early May, or some, you know, or it's unusually cloudy one year, that will not impact what they're paying you because they are renting, they're leasing the space more than they're leasing the energy production. So the maximum will be about how many more modules they feel can fit onto the local grid, meaning that there's not too much energy going on to the local circuit, and so they're not causing them any unnecessary problems on the electrical side. So a good number to keep in mind is a maximum that we estimate would be up to maybe 400 KW. And you can see there that the size, that'd be about double the annual payment. So that'd be up to closer to 18,000 a year. I don't know if we'll be able to get all the way there, but I would expect it to be between, you know, 300 to 350. So definitely more, maybe not up to as much as that we would like for it to be cited on the school, but definitely more than you're seeing there.
Thank you.
That's a good question. And Hoffman and Mark and myself will be with the school district throughout this entire process until the system is online. So, and I would say the target date for that, if everything goes smoothly, which is to ask a lot these days, would be, you know, by fall. Okay, sorry, could you repeat that? My internet was a little bit sketchy. Maybe if someone, you're cutting out a little bit for me, too, I'm sorry.
I'm wanting to look at if you could try typing your question into the chat box just to ensure we kept what you're trying to say.
Can you hear me now, or no?
Yes.
Yep, I can hear you.
I was just questioning where the panels would be located.
That's a good question. So we, our original proposal on behalf of the district would be to accommodate essentially the load of both facilities, elementary and also the high school, middle school. But for simplicity of project, and because that's where a new roof is, and there's plenty of space for all of the potential modules, they would all be in the high school, middle school, most likely located along the northern, several sections of that facility. And it would be situated so that, you know, it would be over the areas that had the new roof, and so you're not going to worry, ever have to worry about moving the system to have to replace anything underneath. So they'll all be located at that one school.
Be required to pay for fixing the roof damage, or, you know, if there was? How does that work?
Yeah, so there's some protection there in the lease so that there's, they are required to keep the roof at the, in its current state and return it to its, the state that they found it in after the end of the lease, which would be 20 years unless you decided to push some extensions into it as well, which there are three. So any damages that are caused by the system, Alliant would be on the hook for. And I should note that the system, the racking system, how the modules are put onto the roof are done without any penetration. They're self-balisted, and so there's just weights up there. And so with a new roof, we've, there should be no problems. And also, any problems that occur because of the system, Alliant will be on the hook for.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, yeah.
Are there any other questions? All right, if there is nothing more, then thank you very much, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you for having me. And it's been a pleasure working with Melanie, and we look forward to helping you through the rest of this process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now contributions to the district. We received donation of time by sharing Christmas cheer to elementary students and staff. Visit from Santa Elf and Reindeer featuring Jamie Lane, Lori Bertram, Lee Bertram, and Julie Worth. So thank you to each of them for brightening the day of our elementary students. Consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
This is Mrs. Pecky. I would like to recuse myself, as one of the items does include one of my family members, please.
You, Mrs. Pecky? We will then vote by general consent. And hearing no dissent, the consent agenda carries. Public comments. I do not believe that anyone is registered to speak. I don't see anything in the chat box. Correspondence. The district received a thank you from the Lakes Community Church for a donation of $972.93 to Project Backpack. Those are donations that came into the district that were earmarked for Project Backpack and were forwarded to them. And a thank you was also received for a memorial from the family of Boots Riske. Board recognition. Tonight, we have some recognition for Andrew Elmhurst and for Mason Wiesner, Mr. Wolfgram. If you would like to speak about that, because I do not believe that Mr. Brad Johnson is on.
No, I'd be glad to. I'm not sure that Mason Wiesner could make it tonight, he had a basketball game. And I'm not sure if Andrew Elmhurst ended up being able to log on or not. Andrew, are you out there in any way, shape, or form? If they are not, I know he's also a wrestler, so he may be coming out of practice this evening. But these are two gentlemen that not only have outstanding athletic ability, but have outstanding integrity and character. I can't think of two better representatives at this time for our athletic program. Andrew Elmhurst is receiving the offensive line and defensive line, all-region honors, and that's selected by football regional coaches within the region. Mason Wiesner, punter, all-region honors, selected by the football coaches also within the region. I mean, when we think about the way the athletic seasons have gone this year, I want to give my hat off to not only these gentlemen, but the coaching staff, several of which are board members here this evening, that I think did an outstanding job in a number of different ways. Number one, they preached integrity and character, and that these boys needed to find their joy in the moment and when things happened. And they played every game as though it were their last. They had a very exciting season. Our coaching staff did an outstanding job motivating them, even when they knew at the end of the season they wouldn't necessarily be able to play for a conference championship or be able to go on to Madison. So my hat is off to these gentlemen for their outstanding athletic abilities, their leadership on the field, in the classroom, and my hat is off to the coaching staff. Thank you for all that they did for our Manawha Wolves this year.
I also find it very impressive when we see that the other coaches recognize the athleticism of our young people. That's always quite an honor for these young men to be selected for this significant honor.
Indeed.
Thank you, and congratulations to Andrew and to Mason. That is a fantastic accomplishment. It makes us proud when we do see our young men rising to that level. Dr. Hopper, your report.
Thank you. And we will get certificates for both Andrew and Mason sent up to the high school so Mr. Wolfgram can deliver them in person. Hopefully before the holiday, but I'm not certainly, depends on which academic cohort group they're in right now. Is Kyle Kahn's on? We were optimistic that he might be able to be our student council rep tonight, but we have students going in every which direction this evening, so he may not have been able to join us. Well, if anyone sees him jump on, please do let me know. There isn't just a whole lot going on legislatively right now. Senator Darling is the new Senate Education Committee Chair, and obviously has a great deal of experience in the area of education. So she is succeeding Luther Olson in that position. We look forward to getting acquainted with the new formation of that committee. The other thing that was very interesting was a state superintendent forum that was held across CISA 6. A number of legislators were also able to listen in on that. Five of the six candidates running for state superintendent of public education were able to answer a common set of questions. It lasted, well, close to 90 minutes, and was very interesting. So we really got to see the true nature of each of the candidates, get to know them a little bit better on a personal level, as well as to hear their perspective on moving the department forward. All of them spoke about making pretty significant changes in the Department of Public Instruction based on the feedback they had received from constituents such as yourself. So that's everything from the legislative perspective. Looking at monthly enrollment, you'll see that we do not have much change at this point, really a very stable count throughout this school year. An important one coming up will be the second Friday in January count, which is going to be occurring during our virtual week. It's Friday the 8th when that official count is taken. So we've already taken steps. Mrs. Bessett is very integral in making sure that the count data goes to the state accurately. But just like our third Friday in September influences finances coming into the district, the second Friday in January count is similarly very important. So we're taking a look at that. In terms of curriculum, some of the activities going on right now, I did some polling of CNI directors with the help of CISA 6 across our region to see what's happening with secondary social studies materials. I was hoping to find out if there were preview materials out there to be ordered to get those orders in before the holidays. What I'm finding is that nowadays, people are really not ordering what we might think of as the traditional textbook. So many of you may remember carrying that two-incher of a social studies textbook for US history, or world history, or civics, or some other course. And that's really being done quite differently these days, and I think it's for purposes of staying more relevant. But today's social studies standards are very much around inquiry-based learning. So they're theme-based with the idea that students are learning relevant material that is current and up-to-date. So for that reason, there is one resource that has kind of an inquiry-based approach through Discovery Education, and I did order a demo of that. Interestingly, it's an online service. So I suspect that the movement in the future is going to be quite different. I did set up a meeting with the secondary social studies teachers far after the first of the year so that we can start to talk about our approach and how we would like to do this. Many districts have designed their own materials, but this one resource looked quite interesting. It's being used by the Holy Hill School District. So I also put out a call to their superintendent, whom I'm acquainted with, to just get some information. In terms of math instruction, there, I was in charge of doing a rubric that the teachers are going to be used for weighing the materials. So the rubric includes everything that's in your board policy that we need whenever we review for new materials for adoption. And added to that are the math practices, which are very highly emphasized as the curriculum component that need to be reviewed. So the teachers will use the rubric as they're looking at the materials. There are two companies that we're looking at, at the elementary level, and two for the secondary. And what we know is that the transition is seamless, no matter which combination of those two you choose. One would be the same K-12. The other would offer two different materials, but they work hand and glove, so it would be very effective. So in the month of January, we have CISA staff coming in at both the elementary and secondary to demonstrate lessons out of both of the materials that are being considered, and that will be recorded. So teachers will be able to see firsthand what it feels like to use the different resources. And then they'll also have a direct review of the resources that they'll do, and then use the rubric to choose which is a better fit for our district. I'll stop and breathe a minute in case you have any questions about anything so far. All right, our next topic is COVID. And really exciting news. Last week, at the Wapaka County DHS and Superintendent's meeting, we learned that numbers across Wapaka County for incidence rate has dropped dramatically. We are back to the kinds of numbers in the county that we haven't seen since September. So that is amazing. So we're hoping that the worst of it is over. We believe that all the mitigation strategies that have been in place are the reason why we've had such success. In school, as districts go, there were a couple of our neighbors, Marion and Iola, are down to practically no positive or students out on quarantine. So that's looking very positive. Numbers generally speaking are going down in our neighboring school districts. Unfortunately, in Manawha, we have one of the higher incidence rates, and our numbers are actually going up rather than down. We're hoping that's just a blip on the radar because I've talked to the administrative team, and our goal is to work on the REED opening plan and start to make a shift toward and start to make a shift toward having all students back five days a week for second semester. And then also looking at some of the other opportunities. Students at at the elementary, for example, returning to art class in the art room rather than having a teacher on the cart. Or other things like fans and stands. You know, can we start to open the door a little bit at a time to see if we can still maintain all our mitigation strategies, still keep those numbers of incident rates coming down in the district and in the county, while trying to take baby steps toward, I guess you'll call it, the new normal. So I'll stop there again because that's a really tall order that we'd be bringing back at the January board meeting. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, Russ Johnson here. How long do we feel we need to let that that week after Jan? You know, when we're virtual, what do they feel is the proper timeframe after that to think about this? I mean, we got to give it some time, I would think, a couple of weeks, right?
They, right, that's almost exactly the timing between the end of your virtual week and your regular board meeting in the month of January. So you will have you will have seen if there's an uptick in cases just from, you know, the family gatherings and so forth that will happen over the holidays. So again, Jed has implored everyone to do their very best to use mitigation strategies with our families and our homes as well so that we aren't bringing anything back into the school after the winter break.
When does it start the second semester?
Let's see, is that the 26th? I'm hoping one of the principals has their calendar up because I don't have that in front of me. It it's right after your board meeting.
That's correct, Melanie. It would actually be, I'm pointing at my calendar, correct, Tuesday, the 26th.
Thank you.
So we we know it. It's better for kids to be in school face to face with their teachers, but we want to do it safely. It's probably the biggest challenge for the high school because some of those classrooms, the size is a bit smaller. So we aren't going to be able to keep students six feet apart in the classroom in high school in some of those high school classes. So we'll have to use all our other mitigation strategies.
So if we go back five days a week, we will not probably go back to the plan that we originally put in where they just walk in with masks and can take off their masks in the classroom because we can't social distance. Is that correct?
That would be realistic, yes. Many of the classes probably have 25 to 27 students. There may be even a couple of classes larger than that. So they will be closer together. They would need to keep their face coverings on. I know the teachers will try to distance the student desks as best they can, but it probably is not going to be the six feet. The other thing we have to be mindful of with the high school, and and I know Dean started to talk with his staff about it, is if we do have an exposure at the high school, close contacts are probably going to be fairly significant. So it probably would mean the whole high school going virtual. Whereas at the elementary and middle school, we're able to close a classroom at a time if we need to because we keep those students in cohorts. That could be stressful if if the high school is open for several weeks and then has to close for a week or two. I I don't know about the stability of that and what that's going to feel like to teach in that environment. It's certainly something to be mindful of. So the principals will definitely be talking with the staff about how to make this work effectively. And the last topic is the election. There are three positions that are available in the April election. So Bruce is again running for the position in the town of Little Wolf. And right now, I think, running unopposed. And then from the township of St. Lawrence, I believe we have Mr. Seeger running again. And Ms. Ryerson has also returned papers, so there will be a contest there. And Mr. Forbes has taken out papers and is not intending to run for the city of Manawa position. Mr. Forbes, do you have any comment comments to share?
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say I've enjoyed being on the school board for the last four plus years. And I wish everybody continued success. And if anybody knows anybody in the city of Manawa that would be willing to come on board, I guess, come on before January 5th and sign papers.
Yes, the the papers have to be in by 5:00 P.M. to the district office on January 5th. And Mrs. Flynn will be staying late that evening to make sure the office is open and available for anybody that might be coming in on that final day to drop off their papers. So that's 5:00 P.M. on January 5th. And that's for the city of Manawa. Definitely do talk to people out there. I think we're very blessed in this community. It's a very congenial board. You've taken on some incredibly difficult topics over the past several years. There's been lively debate. And I've got to say, when you walk out the door, when that is when we used to actually walk out a physical door, people always stayed friendly and welcoming. So you could have a tough debate during a meeting and still stay friendly as you walk out the door. So I mean, I think that's a rarity these days with the board. So I think it's a nice board to join. If there's any citizen out there listening, hope they'll consider it. President Johnson, do you have anything to add regarding the election?
Um, I do not. I just would like to say thank you, Stan, for, you know, the time that you have put in. And and, you know, it's it's always been incredibly valuable having you on here as a colleague. And it's not an easy job to do. I think that everybody understands that, but it is definitely rewarding. And we look forward to whatever the the next chapter brings and bringing somebody new on board.
Thank you.
All right, school operations. School operations reports. Were there any questions at all for Ms. Brower or Mr. Wolfgram regarding the reports to the board? Any comments from either of you?
I have a comment. This is Danny. I just want to say again, thank you to the chamber and everyone who had something to do with our special visitor last week. Having Santa come in was actually super fun because he couldn't come in the building because he is like, you know, like everybody else. We can't have visitors in the building. But he peeked in the windows, and every classroom I went to had to tell me how many times he peeked in the windows. So it was actually super fun to have him kind of do that peeking in and checking up on the kids to make sure that they were making good choices and following the rules. So that was awesome. And then he also dropped off some treat bags that the kiddos got after their recording their concert this morning, which then is my next comment. We did the concert this morning. The kids, it was super fun. I was exhausted by 10:00 this morning, but it was really fun. And I think the kids had a really good time. But several of them said, actually, a couple of them said they were very sad that no one could come and see them. And then other ones said that they were kind of happy because they get very nervous seeing all of the people when there's a lot of people in the stands. So it was depending on which kid you talk to, either a good thing or a bad thing. But it was a super fun morning, and we're all exhausted, but we have another day. This is the longest short day, short week of the school year, I think.
And for those that want to see the children's program, a reminder for how they access that?
It will be posted. I believe we're posting it. The you, it'll be on our YouTube channel by, the hope is by the end of the day Wednesday, if not earlier. We're hoping to have it earlier. And I'm hoping that it will also be posted on Facebook, too. So thanks to Austin Rowan, he's not on, but he helped us videotape. Ms. Yu was a big help, and all of the classroom teachers who helped Ms. Groomen kind of get everything all set and have the kiddos all set. And we had virtual students are also part of the program.
Absolutely adorable, so you don't want to miss it. You'll have to tune in and watch it, and I'm sure the kids will have a wonderful time watching themselves, too.
Thank you. All right, business-related reports. Are there any questions from any board members regarding the business reports? Mrs. O'Brien, do you have any comment?
I do. I just wanted to mention that for Finance Committee last month, or a few weeks ago, actually, I reviewed the 2019-20 audit results that was provided to the district by our auditors, which is Whitley out of Madison. And in that packet, so in the Finance Committee packet, there's a copy of the audit book. It's 55 pages of light reading. It'll be, it's very, very, you know, good before bed reading. But anyway, I put together a one-page summary of the highlights of of the audit, kind of things that you might want to check out, like turn to page eight and look at this and and whatever. So I would encourage you to go over the audit results. And if you have any questions or concerns, you could contact either me or Dr. Opera. And also, if you would like a copy, a paper copy of the audit, usually, you know, when we're meeting in person, you would have the the auditors put together a paper copy for each of the board members. That is available, and I would be happy to send it out. And and we certainly can can do a phone conference. Or if there's something more that you would like at a future board meeting, please just let me know. It was a fairly uneventful audit, though, so.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Directors reports. Were there any questions for Mr. Cobra Rubius? I do not believe he is on, but perhaps if there are, Dr. Opera could relay them?
I would happily do so.
And it doesn't look like there are any. Is there any, are there any board members who wish to share comments with the public? All right, committee reports. Are there any questions for any committee chairs or any comments from any committee peers? Let's move on to unfinished business. Item A, consider approval of Neola Policy 8550 as presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve Neola Policy 8550, competitive food sales as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
I will take Mr. Forbes. He reached a two. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed by a roll call vote. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item B, review Washington, D.C. field trip cancellation policies slash reimbursements. No action is required on this. But are there any questions regarding the cancellation policy and reimbursements? We had asked for that information last month. I don't know if there's anything new to add. Okay, I'm guessing not, so we will move on. New business. Item A, consider endorsement of the 2020-21 library plan.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 library plan as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Pecky, second.
Second by Mrs. Pecky. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed by roll call vote. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item B, consider approval of school year 2021 fundraisers.
Mrs. Pecky, move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the school year 2020 to 2021 fundraisers as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Pecky. Do I have a second?
Mr. Holman, I second it.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item C, consider approval of school year 2021 salary increases for administrators.
Bruce Scheller? I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the school year 2020-2021 salary increases for administrators to be retroactive to July 1, 2020, as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Mr. Holman, I second that.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller? Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item D, consider approval of add alternate options for completion.
Mrs. Pecky, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the add alternate options for completion of the middle school slash high school to include the front asphalt replacement, back loop asphalt replacement, west parking lot lighting upgrades, and the replacement of computer switches and access points as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Pecky. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Item E, consider approval of solar customer hosted renewable solutions proposal with Alliant Energy as presented.
Dan Forbes, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the solar customer hosted renewable solution proposed with Alliant Energy as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to go with Mrs. Pecky. I believe that was who spoke first. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item F, first reading of policy 7250 commemoration of exceptional individuals or groups. Is there any feedback on this particular policy or any questions? Okay, this policy will be up then for approval at the January regular Board of Education meeting. Item G, consider approval of administrative job description technology director webmaster.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the technology director webmaster administrative job description as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Luke Seeger, I second it.
Second by Mr. Seeger. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item H, consider approval of emergency paid sick leave for COVID-related 19 through June 30th, 2021.
Mrs. Pecky, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve an extension of emergency paid leave practices for COVID-19-related illnesses through June 30th, 2021 as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Pecky. Do I have a second?
Mr. Holman, I second that.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item I, discuss Wasby delegate assembly resolutions and direct the district's delegate on voting matters. Um, so this, this, or this year, rather, the Wasby Convention is going to be held virtually, and once again, Mr. Scheller is going to be our district delegate. Does anyone have any strong feelings to be shared about any of the resolutions that are being moved forward? Um, do we want to direct Mr. Scheller on voting a certain way on any resolutions, or do we just simply wish to advise him to vote his conscience?
Russ Johnson, I guess I would have Bruce vote his conscience if it was my choice.
I agree.
I agree.
Me also.
What's that? No, that sounds good, yeah.
All right, I agree as well, so cut it. And vote your conscience, please, Mr. Scheller.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, just a quick reminder, if anyone else that would like to register for the convention, please do let me know. Um, registration is open. Currently, just Mr. Scheller and I are registered. Um, this year, everything is online, uh, but you have availability to watch any of the programming, any of the keynotes, up to um, one year following the event.
So do we have to be registered to be able to view those or not?
Yes, unless um, you, we watch broadcast together. Uh, I would assume that's, Mr. Scheller and I will have log-ons um, to be able to access the programming. Um, so if you wanted to join us, that would be one way of doing it.
Well, I was just wondering if there was something that was really, you know, something that the board would like to watch or catch up on, because I am unable to do that. Um, that would be something that I'd be interested in.
They do have some big-name speakers this year, so if you see something that catches your eye, uh, did you get a, a brochure sent to your home?
Yes.
If, if you see something there that really catches your eye, let me know, and I can look into how we can, can share that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. And last order of business, consider approval of school year 2021-22 open enrollment available space.
Russ Holman, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the school year 2021-2022 open enrollment available spaces as presented and required annually by Board Policy 5113.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion?
I did just want to-
Hearing none, Mr. Seeger. Sorry, sorry, Dr. Oppher, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's a little delay here. Um, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew um, internally and in fear of any of our teaching staff, that there are low numbers in a couple of class sections, and so for open enrollment purposes, it describes having a section at a grade level. Um, there is no staff and program change recommendation at this point to lay off any teachers, so I just wanted to publicly say that and make that crystal clear. Um, it's just for purposes of making space available for the future of the programs. Uh, there's also a lot of uncertainty because uh, we have not yet met the parents of our youngest children coming into the district. We have census data, and we will be doing uh, some communication. By we, I mean, uh, Danny and her staff will be reaching out to those families that live in our district and um, singing the praises of the district and trying to get um, enrollments solidified um, early this spring, so we know exactly how many students we're looking at for the fall.
Any question from anyone regarding that? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Next meeting dates, all of the following meetings will be held virtually. January 11th, 2021, Finance Committee, 6:00 PM. January 13th, Curriculum Committee, 5:00. Also, January 13th, Policy and Human Resources at 6:00. January 18th is our regular board meeting, 7:00. January 20th is the Wasby Delegate Assembly at 1:30. January 20th through the 22nd is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards State Education Convention held virtually, and January 20th is Buildings and Grounds at 5:30. I am looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Mr. Holman, I move that the Manawa Board of Education adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, second.
I will take Mr. Johnson for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote at 8:01 PM. Thanks, guys. Have a fantastic evening and a happy holiday.
Thank you.